Just keep running.
There's something that's here, here, I can slide down.
There he is.
The one in this building.
How you been?
Oh Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Alright, council. I'm gonna go ahead and call the work session to order here. We have Greg online, you guys can see on the screen up here. Greg, apologies to you that our camera is over in the corner, so we're not gonna look directly at you, but I believe we can all, everyone hear him fine.
It's no problem at all.
Hey, well, Greg, we very well know why we're here to discuss the idea of creating a statutory park board. There have been some questions raised by the council and the clerk treasurer, so this is more of an opportunity to facilitate some Q and A with you, and just from your position at DNR, just helping us to understand what is and is not required, how do we manage this moving forward and questions like that. So with that, is there any, from the council, question you'd like to start this off on? Or Tammy?
Why we need to change?
What would be, so Greg, I think it's a good question, and I'll rephrase a little bit. What would be the difference from a statutory park board compared to the advisory park board that we have in existence, understanding that you'll have to make some assumptions on our setup at the moment?
Okay, in a nutshell, an advisory board is, at least by statutory levels, it's ad hoc. It has no legal basis. Somebody on a advisory board cannot spend public funds, they cannot do, sign off on contracts, they cannot sign off on deeds, they cannot do anything that would be a fairly ordinary park board function because they have absolutely no legal ability or status to do so. Now, keep in mind that all those legalities of a statutory board are basically in coordination with and under the guidance of the council and the mayor. So essentially, what you're doing is you're adding a few more members to your team when you have a statutory board. When you've got a purely advisory board, it has no more meaning or authority with the local government than any group of citizens standing on a street corner.
I'm not sure if I'm right on this. Some research I was doing, by going to a park board, isn't there a lot more grants that we could get, even like with the ball diamond that help us build that kinda stuff up and stuff by having an actual park board? Don't they offer, I think, like June or July 1st of this year is the next?
Grant cycle?
Grant cycle, but isn't there grants that could help us even by having a park board that way?
Yes. The land and water conservation fund in Indiana requires a statutorily created park board in place, and there's a number of reasons for it being this way. It was set up a very, very long time ago, to the best of my knowledge, somewhere beyond 50 years ago, where a statutorily compliant park board was necessary for this. In a nutshell, in part because the way the legislature set up the park board statutes, park boards are intentionally tried to be created as a non-political entity, where you've got, you know, no more than two members of any given party on a board. For example, is one of the stipulations that's listed off in code. Now, you folks, as a third-class city, you don't have to follow that if you don't want to, because that was changed very, very recently in statute. But DNR highly recommends that, because if you can keep the board apolitical, then at that point, the choices and the decisions that the board is making are not based on the next election, but based on what's best for your parks. So trying to keep the politics the heck out of it tends to seem to be the best way to run things, so far as what DNR is concerned. The other thing that they are looking for with a statutory park board, Park Service wants to see sustainability in whoever they're going to be dealing with locally, because if you put land and water money into a park, it is forever, it's in perpetuity. So that land is protected essentially forever. Ladies and gentlemen, forever is a long time. And one of the things they're looking for is that statutory park board essentially is set up in such a way that it's more durable. It doesn't depend on the next election. Okay, you're not gonna suddenly dump the entire board because some, you know, you had a major change in political party in the community, and oh, time to sweep the entire board out the door and start over again. Those considerations tend to be gone. You're trying to put it on the basis of the best interests of parks and recreation. And that's one of the many things that Park Service is looking for, is they want those decisions made on something other than elections. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I, I'm concerned about it a little bit, because I, the way I'm reading it, and I can't say that right, but what, the way I'm understanding it though, is if you have a park board, they can make decisions and on what we're gonna be doing at the different facilities, park, pool, golf, whatever. But we, we currently have a general fund budget for park, pool and golf, and it, to me, it makes it sound like that's gonna be going away. And that the park board would be in control, the park board would be in control of them departments. And then it was almost like we have to have a, we have to pay someone to be on the park board.
No. There's, there's no requirement in statute for, A, for board members, it's an option. I believe the statute does contain some basic information about, here's what you might be able to do. In fact, if I remember correctly, it's actually fairly limited to a really small amount. I'd have to go back and actually dig in that. I almost never look at that particular portion of the statute. Most park boards in Indiana, probably 95% are unpaid. To the best of my knowledge, the statute also does not require special board-only bookkeeping or fund setups. They're basically looking for you to follow all the usual stuff by, that you guys have to do already for state board of accounts. And it would all be worked through, generally, most boards run all their stuff through the clerk treasurer. And in some cases, there are actually even limits placed on immediate spending that can be done by the park board themselves. Otherwise, they have to go to the council, and that's part of the overall approval and oversight that the council and the mayor's office has over any given board. So they can't just run right out and spend $5 million on a roller coaster for your parks. They have to come to the council and try to work out what it is they want to get, how they wanna get it, and then you folks have worked together to actually set up funding and budgeting for that.
So when it says citizen park boards place much of the daily controls and operations, as well as many of the hassles and problems of a public resource directly into the hands of the concerned citizens who use it.
Okay, is that coming out of the statute?
Yeah.
36-10-3?
Uh, is that?
Well, it's from the list of a few potential reasons to have a legal park board.
Okay.
But it's just that quick hit list.
Okay. That is not statute. I'm not quoting statute when that, you're reading that in that white paper. The, generally speaking, most boards have limits on what they can spend immediately. And everything runs through the treasurer and the current funding structure for the community. It acts like any other sub-department of your city government. Do you folks have a streets department?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. When they want something, what do they do?
Well, they normally have a, they normally provide a budget for what they want for the next year, and we take it through the budget process, and then it's appropriated for the next year's spending.
You can do that exact same thing for the park board.
Okay, so who is, so we have department heads for, you know, the parks department and the golf and the pool. So who is, are they gonna have to go to the park board to get their recommendations? So they know what to put into the budget for the budget process?
That kinda thing is exactly what you folks are going to have to decide, because it is not specifically laid out in statute. That is a local control set of options. You control it how you basically wish. There's a basic set of powers and duties, quote-unquote, listed in the statute. I'm pretty sure I sent a copy of that to you folks. Indiana Code 36-10-3?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. I would suggest taking a look at that list. And basically, all of those things are only through the power of the purse held by the council and the mayor's office. So they all answer to you. They're simply an addition to your team. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The way I've always understood, everything would work basically like it does now.
Yeah.
This would just give us more options to search for monies for the park.
For the most part, yes.
Through grants.
Yes, yes. What it does, the change between your current setup and this one, is you're basically lining it up with state law so that you have a sound legal foundation for any decisions that are being done, any rules or regulations that are created, and how it all works. That's all you're doing, okay? You're not tossing out your existing board, you're basically bringing it into legal compliance with statute. That's all you're doing. You're not tossing the baby out with the bathwater, you're simply setting it on a stronger legal footing.
So Keegan, I'm still a little confused. How much authority are you truly giving the park board, or you're anticipating giving the park board to make decisions?
So of course, that'd be a local decision that we would create, but I do think a structure where golf and pool formally report to Diana as the park superintendent, and then Diana reports directly to the park board and council is that structure, that reporting structure.
Through the board of works, or?
Yeah, correct.
Like, pretty much like everything does now.
Correct. And then, yeah, the budgeting workshops would be the same fashion that I think, moving forward, Diana would have more involvement with the pool and golf course, where she doesn't have a lot of that today. Just as, to respect and understand the reporting structure, Diana would have a more participatory role in that. But the budgeting process would still behave the same as it does today.
So I would follow them with two things. That could get a little dicey if we don't set it up right, because the board of works tells her to do something, but the park board tells her to do something different. Who's the legal authority? The other thing I'd say is the statute does say shall appoint the necessary administrative officers of the department. Well, is that Diana? Does that mean the mayor no longer has direct appointment powers to that department head? But he does by extension of having the five direct park board appointments? That would, basically, essentially, we'd have to decide that's true. Are we willing to separate the executive's appointment power for that department head and put it in a five-member body's hands? That would be vastly different, because it does say that in point four. Now, is the department head an administrative officer? I would think so, but I don't know. But yeah, I mean, point seven, prepare and submit an annual budget. Okay, so Diana would work with the park board, five-member board for our city, wanted all by the mayor.
Is it a four-member board or a five-member board?
Five, I believe.
No, the new one.
Normally, a park board under Indiana Code, under 36-10-3, is four members. And then, if you want, you can also add additional ex officio members, like somebody from the library board, somebody from the school board, I believe the soil-water conservation district, there's a whole list of various other folks you can add on, which then can bring you up to, I believe, a maximum of seven? It's buried way down in the statute. I'd have to have to test, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to decide that.
And then we'd have to decide that. So there's, they would work with that and submit a budget. The council still has yes or no on all the budget like they do today, but then we say, all right, park board, in your official capacity, you can make decisions that still have to be approved under claims for the city council, like they do today. But then I'm kinda like back to what Ken was, well, okay, what's the difference? If they can't approve their own claims, and now I get, I, can they levy their own tax?
Not without council approval. Everything runs through the council and the mayor's office.
Right, and there would, there would be some that would say, well, once they do levy their own tax, is it like the library board where they can keep going and change how much they want, levy another tax the following year?
Only with approval of the council and the mayor's office.
So no different than a library board, which some people say the library generates too much money, but then I guess you could lay in the council, county council, if that was a real issue. Okay.
So on the IC statute, when it says under three, provide police protection for its property and activities either by requesting assistance from state, municipal or county police authorities, or having specified employees deputized as police officers, deputized employees however not eligible for police pension benefits or other, whatever that word is, of police officers. So do they, do we have to make that rule?
No.
So, so even though the statute says this, as the duties, we don't necessarily have to follow these?
Well, they, that one would be more convenient, because it's a city park, and we have a city police department, so. Whereas if this was a
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, whereas this was a county park board, while the sheriff's officers have jurisdiction, the response to the area wouldn't be as great as it is with the city.
Yeah, so if there was a county park board maybe close to city limits, the county could ask the city to respond or hire their own park rangers or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Separate from the county chef's department.
Like the Kurgandal property that's in Prairie Township northwest Tuckin County. If something occurs there, to identify who's gonna be the first to respond in case of an emergency.
They would request assistance from state municipal or county police authorities, or deputize their own park rangers or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, it's providing you options. It's providing you options to choose from.
I think it just comes down to if it, operations and if we see a funding advantage. We have had issues in the past where, well, it's the debate, do you want a park board tax or not?
But you don't have to have a park board tax?
No, but inevitably, if we do this, a future administration or this administration, if they want to, could do that. So we should set this up with, they will eventually levy a tax.
I would agree. If we do eventually, eventually, somebody will levy a tax.
Which could be an appropriate decision now or in the future.
I was gonna say, you could make the argument now. I mean, we don't have the funds now to support our park system, so.
Exactly. That's why it can be, it can, it can be good or bad, but, but the, the millions of dollars that are out there
Yes.
in grant runs that we can't get our hands on now, we would be privy to.
Yes.
It's no different to me, though, than the debate we had about utility rates. Do you want those in hands of people that live here and can be replaced by people who live here, or not? And right now, we just don't have the funds, as Ken said. I think you could make a solid argument that our parks department struggles every year with line item general funds.
Definitely.
Um, to get by. I mean, I guarantee you, if you took pictures of the park 100 years ago, 90, 80, all the way to today, there was probably a high point, and now it's like, we're cutting down trees, we don't have the money to replace, our equipment's aging, gets hit, and the insurance says, well, it's so old, we can't give you fair market value, things like that. I mean, the baseball diamonds were built in 69, they were in awful shape. So I think you could make the argument, I think it'd have to be carefully, carefully looked at, because we will be saddled with the council that added another tax. Whether it happened now or in 20 years, it'd be our fault.
So if you levy the tax, does that affect the general fund levy that we currently have? Because we can only levy so much, so would that be added to that? Do you know?
In all honesty, I can't answer that one. I have no idea how that grand total is calculated, to be actually honest with you.
I do think, I think that would be
That was above my pay grade, folks, sorry.
For reading financial, because I think because of our circuit breaker, we would have to have that conversation about. We might, if you levy a park tax, you have to decrease the general fund tax levy to compensate for it.
So something that we have to think about is in regards to the park board. If we set one up, we have to make the rules, like, do we wanna allow them to do fundraising? And because, where is that gonna go into, and all that kinda stuff? Because that would be a part of the duties or whatever.
True, yep.
I guess that would answer my question, yeah. Sorry for all the questions. I just, going through this compared to what, what it said, it just kinda made it sound like they would be their own.
Keep in mind, this is specifically designed, if I understand the way the legislature set this up way back in the day, and it was created long before I showed up here, the idea was to try and get some folks who just are concerned with parks and the conditions of the parks and the people who use the parks above and beyond what you folks are trying to do day-to-day in running the actual local government. So you're basically getting some helpers. Unpaid, mind you, in most cases, helpers. And in doing so, they're trying to set this up so it's on a solid legal footing, so that any of the work that's being done is totally kosher across the board. Board of accounts can't squawk about it. Your, your local citizens can't squawk about it. It's all legal, open and above board. So they're trying to set up just some basic parameters, basically, for this board to operate under, just like all your other boards. You'll discover, if you look at most of the other kinds of boards out there, they run in much the same way that 36-10-3 does for park boards.
Okay, I've heard you, I've heard you comment multiple times about it now being, what are we doing illegally now? If we're not doing anything illegal now, why are we concerned, I mean, I'm, I don't quite get the connection yet.
Okay. Right now, you've got a, a board in place that is essentially powerless and has no legal standing. And that's fine, if you don't want them to do anything, and you don't want them to spend any money, and you don't wanna make any rules, and you don't wanna do anything, hey, that's great.
Regardless of which way we go, they still have to come through the board of works and the council, so.
Right.
I'm, I'm still confused on where anything illegal may happen.
Okay, for example, if your advisory board walked into a local store and with, even with council permission, they can't spend public tax dollars. Your advisory board cannot set rules for your parks. Your park board cannot sign off on a contract. So say you're gonna hire somebody to fix one of your lawn mowers, they can't sign off on a contract for that.
Well, I, I don't wanna, I hate to interrupt you, but they don't now. That, that all comes through the board of works.
Okay, then you don't need one, and you don't need this at all.
I'm just
I recommend you don't do it then.
I guess I just, I'm not saying I'm against it, I just
Basically, we have department heads now. You put the board of, of the park, which is basically who they'll answer to, then they answer to the council. They can't do anything, it's just like adding another department head above them in a way. But that's their only job, is to focus on the parks and give us better recommendations.
And I would also, some of the challenge we have with the park board is a disenfranchised park board. And this has been happening for a couple decades, that truly all they have is an opinion. And so when they offer their opinion, and their opinion isn't acknowledged or pursued, it only continues to further erode that sense of ownership.
Can I give an example, King? I think that will help. So if the park for, new park board set a budget for 50 grand for new park equipment, I know that's low. Currently, that board would say, okay, Diane, go, you go do your thing. Diana would then come to the board of works. We tell her, yeah, that equipment looks fine, et cetera, et cetera. But if the park board was a statutory park board, and that 50 grand was in their budget, they could make the plan that, all right, the toddler area needs replaced. It's in our budget, we don't have to ask the council, because we're gonna stay under 50. Diana, just go buy this piece of equipment. This park board agrees that this is the most effective strategy for this toddler area. Then Diana would just submit a claim. The board of works would have to give her permission, then she could go buy it, all that. So again, it's offloading some of that decision-making from the board of works to, to the park board. It is cutting out a few of the steps. And again, I would say, I would agree with Keegan, in some element, if I'm on the park board, I would, right now, I'd be like, why do you need me? I can't make a strategic plan and then implement anything on that.
Well, I, I would push back against that just a little bit, because they still have to come to the board. We can, where they feel, however they feel, we can still deny anything they wanna do.
But you would, how would you do that? You would be denying a claim of money they already spent, if it's below their budget. If we meet with, the park board meets with Diana, has a budget, gives it to us like they do today, and we say, yeah, we agree, you can have 50 grand and line item X. Right now, they would need to then come ask for permission to then buy it. That's what they have to do now. The new way, they would say, no, we've got 50 grand on our budget.
Which is just like my department works with the county.
Yeah, you don't have to ask.
Once I get that approval for my budget, it's mine to do what I need to do with, do whatever repairs I need to do in the county. I don't have to go to them and say, hey, can I do this?
Because you're managing your budget. Now, if you overspend your budget,
Right.
we have to either appropriate more money, shift money around, and that's a problem, or could be a problem, I should say.
They have to come to us before they could overspend.
It'd be no different than if our streets department was advisory, and Mike had to ask the board of works to buy $5 a motorway.
Right.
Well, he'd have to come ask the board of works at a scheduled meeting, then he'd have to go do it. That's how it kinda operates now, it's starting to be great. Big purchases have to come to the board of works.
Well, I can understand all that about the budget, but there are a lot of other decisions that need to, that will need to be made. And, and here again, I'm, to be real honest with you, I'm kinda forced, the statutory park board, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand in my head.
I agree.
What, what's?
It's a big decision.
Because regardless of what they bring to us, I mean, once we approve the budget, the budget, there's a lot of other decisions that'll be made. When, we still have the ability at any time, whether they're statutory or advisory or citizens off the street, we can tell them no. So.
Do they have supervisory control over the employees of the park?
That's what you folks would have to set up. That is not specified by statute, to the best of my knowledge. I don't see anything in there about that.
Establish standards and qualifications for the appointment of all personnel and approve their appointments without regard to politics.
Yep.
Well, personnel sounds like a department personnel. We don't, I'm not sure, we interview, we interview police and fire.
We don't interview, we don't, we don't interview anybody else.
Maybe. I, I hate the idea that the, we need to prolong the hiring process for a $16 an hour employee that works part-time. Um, I think some of that could be handled by the department. Now, a lifelong employee that would be under perf, yeah, maybe we should. Especially that's in a high visible public position like police, fire. I'm not sure I want us Michael manage as a board of works member, Mike, Terry and Diana.
All the decisions.
Yeah, I mean, you could say, hey, the council has these minimum standards, which are the salary limits that we set.
That's
And maybe we could add, that's our hand, but the drug policies, what we expect from a city employer.
That's what I've just, we've already, we've already established the, the minimum standards.
Right.
I mean, in our, in our wage policy, and so.
But if we wanted to add more for some reason, we could take the park board, those, those, as they put it, standards and qualifications.
Yep, and with a park board, we could ask for a lot more grants.
Yep, and with a park board, we could ask for a lot more grants where we can't, with the other.
Millions of that.
Yeah, a lot more money that we could ask for, by a park board could apply for those grants.
Nate, what would be that portion?
It's, it's subsection five.
Yeah. We are closing in on our half hour. Is there any last comments, questions? We can migrate into our council meetings.
I appreciate your time a lot and gives us a lot to think about. I mean, it's not a sentence, it's a name.
Oh, absolutely, you're right.
Well, appreciate it, Greg, and, uh, if we have anything further that comes up, we'll be, we'll reach out to you.
Sounds good. Good luck, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.